Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the December 7th, 2021 minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. A motion has been made. Lori, can you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. I hope everyone had a lovely holiday break. Can you hear me? I'll speak up. I wish I could take my mask off. I hope everyone had a nice break. I know that the two weeks off was something that our staff very much enjoyed this year. Comes around once in a lifetime, the way the calendar fell. So I hope people had a good quality time with their family and friends. I'm going to start my report tonight with a personnel update. Like to let you know that we have hired Sandra White as an ABA over at Park Avenue School and Samantha Chase as our new BCBA. We've received the resignation of Lisa DeLude-Patrel. She's been a team chair for us. Her resignation is effective January 14th. And also, our new remote tutor, who just got hired, has just resigned. There is a list of open positions in your school committee report. We continue to post and seek by word of mouth the people that we need to fully staff our buildings. And not unlike many of the districts around, we're finding it very difficult to fill positions. I do want to note that two of the positions that we've been looking for are L teachers, one at Park Ave. and one over at Bartlett High School. I think the question had been asked if we were in compliance earlier at one of the earlier meetings. We are currently not meeting the optimal hours recommended for L students, and DESI has been informed. It's a little different than compliance. They're recommending optimal hours. So I just want to put that out there. Any questions before I move on? We had our district safety meeting this month, and that included a full presentation by our OPM and our architects on the Bartlett High School renovation project. Chief Shaw and SRO Detective Whiting were present, along with the principals, to learn more about the project and how we will be working in months to come on public safety aspects of this project. The police were very excited to see what we've been doing, and they were thrilled to be engaged in this conversation and upcoming work with us. We had set the year out with sort of a goal, with trying to use data to inform our decisions in the district and to model that and assist our teachers, who are working diligently right now with trying to maintain the learning environments in our school as we face COVID. We put together a presentation for you, which you saw, the MCAS cohort data presentation. We also put together at Central Office the iReady cohort data. So we have been sharing that at staff meetings. We had the pleasure of going to Park Ave. and Webster Middle School last week, and the pleasure of going to Bartlett High School today. Staff were given the opportunity to talk a little bit about it. We were prompting the whole presentation with the sole purpose of sharing the data as one aspect of looking at any trends and really asking staff to be a part of the strategies and changes that we might have to make and being reflective about how we can use this upcoming budget process as an opportunity to make some of those changes. So more to come. I know the principals are scheduled to give updates on their school improvement plans, and we're hoping that some of the initial data that we've shared is used with their ILTs. And we're trying to proceed with normal things in the face of the crisis that we are currently dealing with. So that was fun for us at Central Office to go to the buildings. I also would like to let you know that our Hill consultants that are working with us presented the literacy needs assessment that they've been working on to the Hill, the Gleam leadership team only. This needs assessment results were based on about 58 classroom observations, focus groups that they held with about 123 staff members. And the results were given to us in terms of strengths that they saw and areas that we might need to focus on. It's a very complex, detailed report, and a lot of information to digest. The Hill consultants will be meeting again with the Gleam leadership team to sort of cull through some of that data on January 19th. We had initially thought we'd be ready to present it at the upcoming Professional Development Day on January 18th, but we are not. So we're pushing that to February 11th to share the data with the full staff. Any questions on that? I do want to give you a sports update. I'm sure that if you have kids in schools, you've heard this. The principals and the SWICL League and the athletic directors have met and to discuss sports protocols with the high influx of COVID cases. And they have asked superintendents to support them in the changes of really maintaining only family at existing games. So that's detailed in your school committee report. They will be ongoingly looking at these changes to see when they can open it up again. We hope soon. I don't know if you remember, but way back before COVID hit, we had to put together a Student Opportunity Act Plan. The school committee had approved it, and we had done ours pretty soon and sent it into DESI. They have notified superintendents that all of the Student Opportunity Acts need to be updated, amended, just to follow up with our action steps. And so that is due in April 1st. It does not require the school committee's approval, but I will share it with you once it is complete. It's a much more detailed process this time around, where they're really trying to see how we're using our ESSR funds to support the goals that we outlined in our Student Opportunity Plan. So I'm pleased to say I think it's going to be a pretty straightforward process for us. We've been pretty transparent about how we're spending the ESSR funds, but they just want it complete in this particular format. So I will share that later. Any questions on that before I move on? Okay. I do want to give you an enrollment update. From December to January, we have seen a decrease in student enrollment numbers by about 17 students at Bartlett, about two students at, not about, two students at Webster Middle School. And we've seen an increase by two at Park Avenue Elementary School. We have a number of pending enrollments. It says 16 in your school committee report, but I know that our office has been busy, and that number is probably higher than that now. Our total enrollment is listed below by buildings. Park Avenue has 719 students on January 4th. Webster Middle School has 590, and Bartlett High School has 380. I bring up the total enrollment because I am about to tell you about our student and staff absences since we have returned from the holiday break. We have seen an incredible influx in the number of students coming down and testing positive in COVID. On January 4th, when we returned to school, or January 3rd, we started the Test and Stay Program. So I'm going to work my way backwards and give you the numbers. Today, Tuesday, January 11th, there were 171 students absent at Bartlett High School and 11 staff out. At Webster Middle School, there were 236 students absent and 21 staff out. At Park Avenue Elementary School, there were 262 students absent and 36 staff out. That was today. Yesterday, at Bartlett High School, there were 115 students out and 13 staff out. At Webster Middle School, there were 161 students out and 23 staff out. At Park Avenue Elementary School, there were 174 students out and 26 staff out. That's just Monday and Tuesday. I do have last week listed. I'm not going to read that out loud, but we've seen an increase since last week. Not all of those absences are COVID-related, but a majority of them are, and you will see that data reflected in our COVID dashboard. I bring that up purposely because we are having a, we are having a difficult time and will have a difficult time during this crisis of having so many people out. The Department of Elementary and Education will not allow us to go remote. I won't say that publicly unless they give us approval, which they're not going to. If we have to cancel school, I have communicated through two families in my newsletter what the protocol will be. The principals will notify the superintendent that they have a staffing shortage, and they will, I will notify the Department of Education, and the principals will send out a one-call. We sure hope that doesn't happen. I want to give a tremendous amount of credit to the staff that work in our buildings because they are making ends meet somehow. With the high number of student absences, we are able to move people around, but it is like a puzzle. So I think that's important for you to know. We are not alone in this crisis. We have, as superintendents, made our worries very clear to the Department of Education. But as I am sure that you have seen on the news, the governor will not budge and will not allow remote learning. So I know that I personally was quite excited about the snow amount that happened on Friday because the timing was perfect. If the snow had only been able to last for a week, I think we would have, I think eventually we're going to see a decline in the COVID numbers. But we have a tight stretch of challenging times, and we are in the middle of it. And I would say that I think families are being very patient and understanding and working with our school nurses and our principals. And our staff has gone above and beyond to help keep the school day functioning. So I want to give credit to the staff. Principals, do you want to add to any of that? Because I know you're in it. Okay. Okay. I was asked by one school committee member to just share some data on behavior data that is in your school committee packet in terms of the number of bullying investigations and incidents and suspensions. That data is there for you. At our last meeting, I did mention a grant opportunity for Bartlett High School. It is called the Project Based Learning Grant. It was offered to us through the 1-8 organization. The 1-8 organization funded the Project Lead the Way program over at Bartlett High School and ST Math for Park Avenue Elementary School. At one of our sessions in December, we held a staff presentation. And then we held another session with specific health, PE, and social studies departments over at Bartlett. We did find two staff members interested in learning more about this project-based learning opportunity. In order for us to apply for the grant, we needed to have teacher interest. I would like to publicly thank Ben Genis and Jim Neblong for stepping up. I will keep you informed should we get the grant. The project-based learning and hands-on approach blends nicely with the educational vision for the Bartlett High School renovation project. And it is something that I think we could use over at Bartlett. In terms of the Health and Human Service Pathway, we've had several meetings occur with our Innovation Pathways Consultant, Abigail Callahan, to discuss the development of the Health and Human Pathway course at Bartlett. At this moment in time, we are taking a peek at the Project Lead the Way prescribed pathways for the biotech pathway. We need to find a teacher that might be interested in that. We are also looking at, if we don't go that route, to add some medical careers credentialing. So we're in the working phase of this Health and Human Service Pathway. Mr. Thomas, any, or Mrs. Chapdeline, any more on the Health and Human Service Pathway? Because both of you have been involved with those meetings.
No, I think we're working with Abigail in the Science Department to try to figure out the exact core sequence and making sure that whatever we offer does not limit the options of our students in terms of what they have to take to meet MasCor requirements. So I think you'll be talking a little bit more about that during the budget situation.
Yes, we will.
I guess I just want to add that I am very interested and excited to be on board with this particular initiative. I think opening up pathways for our high school students is so critical in getting them interested in being at Bartlett. So I'm excited to be working with Mr. Thomas and with Abigail as well. There's just a little bit of excitement that I'm feeling right now. We've kind of gotten over the hump a little bit, and I think we're moving forward. And I hope we continue to move forward, and we come up with some good solution for that.
Thank you. And finally, just a little, I'll segue right into your report. The Bartlett High School renovation project, the schematic design, was submitted on December 28th. The special education program details are in your school committee packet. They sent that to DESI on January 6th. And we have a scope and budget meeting and a project transition meeting planned with MSBA on January 24th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any comments or questions from the committee?
Through the vice chair?
Yes.
My question is more for Ms. Peterson and Mr. Thomas. Just looking at the behavior data, I was wondering if you could maybe give us a little bit of a taste of what, of what is inside of the incident area. The incidents are high at Webster Middle School, but they are extremely high at the high school level. So clearly, there's some concern around there. So I was just wondering if you could maybe identify some of what is underlying in that area, please?
If I may, I'll start first. The incident report is a category in Power School. So for instance, if I had concerns about Colin completing his homework, I would fill out a Power School log entry.
Okay.
You can do that. That counts as an incident.
Okay.
So there's a whole range of parent contacts. I don't want to say missing homework, but like assigned detention, did things like that. Those all count on the incidents in Power School so that there's a log entry for every, every single thing that happens in there. So there's a lot of incidents, but they're not all discipline-related.
Okay, so they're not all altercations? They could be...
No, no, no.
Just behavioral...
So within the, within the Power School framework, there are incidents that are reportable to the state because they fall into certain categories. That's a more accurate, that would be a more accurate number of like fights or assaults or those things that rise up there. But like incidents, like today, I looked at the screen of Power School entry, and I saw like 20-something from one teacher. They were all parent contact. I emailed teacher, emailed parent here. Those all count as incidents.
Okay, thank you.
So same thing at the middle school, but you know, it's another issue that has come out of COVID. And again, if you watch the news, we are not the only district that has a very high amount of student discipline and some more severe issues happening. So luckily, we had our dean of students start before vacation. So we are now able to be a little bit more proactive than reactive at this point. And so again, like Fran said, the incidents are by category. And when I broke down the incidents, the most of them are categorized as misbehavior in class. So if you want a bigger breakdown, I can certainly give that to you, but that is what's happening at the middle school.
Thank you.
Again, it's a microcosm of society, and things are ramping up.
Yeah, I do not mean to underestimate the level of serious infractions that we have there. It's at, like Heidi said, it's at record levels, as is the case across the state and across the country.
Right, right. And even though, and I understand it's across the country, everybody is, is managing through it. So we just need to really hone in on it and try to reel it in. So I know that there have been challenges there. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peterson, can you elaborate even just briefly on your proactive strategies for dealing with students that maybe have more frequent behavioral challenges?
Sure. So our four counselors are heavily involved in a lot of our discipline issues. While they don't, while they stay away from the discipline piece, we loop them in when we are issuing consequences or having discussions with them so that they can take it to the different level as a counselor. With two administrators in the building now, we're able to be out in the building more. The dean is doing a lot of that right now as I am swamped with trying to put the puzzle pieces together in staffing, as Dr. Gogan said. And just, just being present is, is a huge piece of that at this point.
Thank you.
Dr. Gogan, I also want to give a shout out to the teachers during this COVID surge. You know, if, whether they're out themselves, they're still assigning work on Google Classroom. Or if they're in, they're keeping the Google Classroom up to date so that students that might be out can still access the assignments. So I think that's the benefit of the district really being up and running with Google prior to COVID. It's been so seamless. And I definitely just wanted to give that shout out to the teachers for keeping the students engaged, whether they're out or the students are out.
We really appreciate what everybody's doing. I, I, there's so many things that happen in any day where people are trying to make sure that we're touching base with the kids. They have their work. But it is difficult. People are doing more now than they ever have, not just here, but everywhere. And you know, we're, we're all trying to keep each other positive and moving ahead. And sometimes we dig into those normal things like data and data presentations just to keep forging ahead. You know, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention our nurses. They are working overtime. And doing the contact tracing takes hours. So we, we're very lucky here with the level of dedication.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. We're 11 days in, and it feels like we're in June almost, right? As Dr. Gogan said, on January 6th, our OPM submitted in the schematic design report to the MSBA. The school, the building committee met on December 16th and approved that report for submittal. We will be meeting again on January 20th as a school building committee to approve the minutes and so the OPM can submit in the final paperwork that is needed to complete the schematic design. We will be meeting with the MSBA on January 24th to start to review the budget process of that. There will be some discussion on what is going to be included for reimbursement and how that will look for us moving forward. We expect the vote to go through in March, which is a little later than we anticipated. But we will hit the ground running with meetings. We have a schedule set that we will be making the rounds now throughout the town and talking about the project and the building and making sure that everybody is aware of where we are at with the project. It is exciting to get to this point and to really start to see what a building will look like for the high school. So it has been a really great effort by everybody involved. And I can't wait to see where we go. I look forward to bringing it out to the community and getting the feedback and getting the questions that we can provide answers for. So I look forward to that. Are there any questions about the project? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator Search Update. I was represented, I was selected to represent the school committee with Mr. Adamopolis on the TA Search Committee. We have been working actively through applications and processes to select finalists to the town for a new administrator. The town is actually currently interviewing. They interviewed two last night, and they have another one going on right now as we speak. And they hope to appoint somebody by the end of the evening. We reviewed approximately 20 applicants that were submitted. We narrowed it down to eight to interview. The screening committee interviewed eight and brought that down to three to submit to the town. So we are confident that we have, we will have a good candidate for town administrator. Any of these three are experienced town administrators. They've done the job before, so they know what it entails. And I'm confident we'll have a good working relationship with whoever the town picks. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. It was really interesting and good process. And the chairman's not here tonight. Nick was the chairman of the screening committee, which is why he's not here. He is downtown. He did a great job on that. So the committee was a great committee. They all took it very seriously, and it was good discussion. So thank you for the opportunity. And I look forward to see who the selectmen pick. Are there any questions about that? No? Right. Next item is transportation. I just wanted to mention a brief update on this. I had asked Dr. Gogan, when she was sending out her newsletter last week, to provide an update of parents. As you know, we had discussed COVID and the areas of impact everywhere across, across the nation. A big part of that is transportation. And I want to knock on something because we have been so fortunate with our transportation company. There have been districts who are without drivers, who cannot find substitutes, who have really been impacted by transportation. And we have not seen that here in Webster. We have a good group of drivers. They have managed to fill in any positions when people are out for sickness. The office staff down, down at the transportation company are driving and doing it themselves when they need to. So we have been very fortunate. But with the rise, you know, I hope it doesn't come to it. But I anticipate there may be a day where I get a call at 5:30 in the morning that says, "We don't have somebody to cover this route." And I wanted to make sure we had a plan and parents were aware of that plan. So transportation will notify me if we are short drivers. We will complete our normal runs that we have drivers for first and then send a driver back out to complete the run that was not picked up, which will then have a trickle effect at our other buildings at Park Ave. Because that would put that run about 30 or 40 minutes behind. We will notify parents as soon as we can with a one-call that their route has been impacted to give them the opportunity. If they want to drive, they can drive if they don't want their child to be late, but there might be a delay in the bus. I don't want them to think. I don't want them to think that the bus is not coming. We will send the bus back, but we will try and make that notification as soon as possible. So I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. Hopefully it doesn't come to that, but if it does, I just wanted to make sure we had a plan of action. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Next item is district projects. We had a few projects that were being completed in December. We had the lighting project that was going on at Webster Middle School. We were waiting for additional supplies to come in. They came right down to the wire, but they were able to get the items in and delivered and installed by the end of December per the contract. So we are good with the lighting. They also came in with the weatherization. At middle school, they put some insulation around doors, some high areas in the roofing in the gym. And I know head custodian David Anis had called me and he said he already has noticed a difference in warmth in those areas. So it has seemed to make an impact on that. And then the other project that we were working on over Christmas break was the water heater at the elementary school. We were able to complete 99.9% of it. There was one part that we are waiting for that should be in actually anytime now. And they will have to come back and install that, but everything is in. It's operational. It's working. It was inspected. Once the part comes in, they're going to have to come in on a weekend or holiday because they need to shut down all the water in order to finish it. But we will get it. And the guy, it was Latuga Plumbing who took the big bit on that and he did a fantastic job. And they did not have to remove a door frame. They were able to take the door off and have about a half an inch to spare and maneuver, maneuver the new tank in. So it was quite a big project, but he said everything went well and smooth. So it should be complete shortly. Just one minor update to it and we should be good to go. And hopefully this tank will last a little longer than the five to six years that the first one did. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Thank you for all the upkeep and the updates. All right. Next item on the agenda is the principals' report. Good evening, Mrs. Peterson.
Hello again. So I am happy to announce that we are going to be starting a partnership with Luck Incorporated. And Mrs. Barris can jump in with anything I'm missing here. So Luck, Inc. is a counseling service. They actually have an office in Webster. And so I was approached by Sean from Luck. They were creating a grant to work with a school. And he approached me and asked if Webster Middle School would be interested. And of course, I said absolutely. And luckily, Dr. Gogan and Mrs. Barris were on board with that as well. So they have been accepted for a three-year grant to begin with, which will extend into a five-year grant, which will enable them to bring two counselors into Webster Middle School. And they will be assisting with servicing at-risk students, whether that's at risk for, Luck typically deals with teenagers with substance abuse, but this, it's not specifically for that that they're working with us, although that would be one piece of it. They'll work with students who are in need of mental health services, academic decline, behavior, a whole litany of things that our counselors, our school counselors have given them a list of students. So we're hoping that they are able to service up to 30 students because one of their counselors will be in our building every day. So they're an outside service that is providing service in the school. They are not employed by Webster Schools. We are providing a space for extra services. So they're doing something beyond what our school counselors can do in school. They're actually doing some deeper counseling with students who are at high risk. So they are also going to be working with those students and others in terms of some after-school activities, some events at school, but also they are looking at doing some trips, like hike at Douglas Park or rock climbing and things like that. And they would, they provide transportation for that as well. And then the other piece that they include is a family education piece. So I think that's super important, too. Did I miss anything, Ms. Barris? So we met with them again yesterday and luckily we have a space for them so that we're not scrambling to find, you know, a space when they come. So they'll have an office in our building and we're very excited to have them start with us. Before I go on, questions about Luck?
No, that sounds great. Thank you.
So it's another piece of our proactiveness that we had, that I had mentioned earlier. So, and then a connection to the community as well. So it's just a nice piece. We have started some testing this week. Today, actually, we started with access testing, which is testing for our English language learners to determine their levels in the English language. And that will go for the next two weeks. And then we've also started our iReady testing, which is our mid-year benchmark for reading and math. So that will also go to the next two weeks. However, with 41% of our children out today, that will probably extend much further than the next two weeks. Ms., Dr. Gogan announced at the last meeting that we were hiring an interim dean of students. So as I stated, she has started, Ms. Melissa Bergeron started before Christmas, the week before Christmas. So she got a little taste and has been doing a fabulous job and a very nice addition to our staff. The staff and students have taken to her very well. And again, happy to have that position filled at this point. And then finally, an update on our parent events. We've been holding monthly parent events. The guidance staff has been, has been leading these. And this month, next Thursday, the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00, our topic will be self-care. So we're going to be focusing on parents rather than students, which we normally do. But it's the time of year where people are starting to feel dragged out and down. So we have a couple of our staff members, including myself, are certified in mindfulness and health as well. And so we'll be leading staff through some, excuse me, parents through some self-care. So we are going to have some self-care packages. And so come on over to the library and get some stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? All right. Hearing none. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the student representative update. Good evening, Colin.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Pretty good.
I don't have much. I was unfortunately not in last week because I did come down with a case of COVID, but I'm back better than ever, so that's good. Quick, some sport updates. Like Superintendent Gogan said, unfortunately, indoor sports cannot have fans other than household people like parents or siblings or grandparents, aunts, uncles, whoever you live with, can only attend. Each team is given a certain amount of passes per player. So hopefully, when all the cases numbers come down soon, everyone hopes that fans will be able to go and pack up the games again and make it a great fun environment that everyone loves. The boys' basketball team record as of right now is two and three. A couple, last week's games were postponed. We did have a lot of COVID cases. The girls are four and four. They also have had a lot of COVID cases, but fortunately enough, we're not, did not have to postpone any games and could play last week. The track teams, I could not find any scores. I don't really know how track scores. But I did hear from a couple of students on the team that they're doing very well. They did not win the meet, but they did beat a couple of schools from a couple meets, which is always good to hear. And school has been very different with a lot of like absence teachers and students. Like today, we had iReady testing and it was very different, especially with about 40% of the school out. So a lot of students will have to make that up. But I know classes also have been very different for some teachers, hard. For example, my calculus class, I only have five students in it, but we had two yesterday and three today. So it's very hard for some teachers to also want to jump along curriculum and it's kind of holding some people back. But teachers are finding a great way to how to adapt and push through and still get work out for everyone. And I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers in Bartlett. They're doing a great job. And also a shout out to Mr. Thomas, doing a great job leading the school. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Colin. Any questions or comments from the committee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda is old business, COVID protocols update. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I do want to let you know that over the holiday break, Desi gave us some last-minute Christmas presents and called us and had 70,000 KN95 masks and about 230 test kits. Thanks to Mrs. Perangeli and the custodians for picking them up. We were able to distribute some of the test kits on the Sunday before staff came to school. So that was a surprise. Our COVID dashboard numbers for this week are not in your packet, but from last week to this week, we had 68 students test positive and 11 staff members test positive. And as I said, the test and stay program started on January 3rd. And with that testing and staying program, we're able to see a lot, a reduction in the amount of students that have to go home as close contacts. So as long as they test every day, they can stay in school and they're negative. So we're keeping some of the close contacts in school. And that concludes my COVID report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee? That's great, the test and stay program to keep kids in school. I did have a question about the 10-day versus five-day. And I know you said at this point that you are sticking with the 10-day. Do you see that changing at some point in the future?
I do. We met our first week back as a COVID leadership team to discuss that. And that was last week. And, you know, we kind of make decisions collaboratively. You know, our nurses have the brunt of dealing with everything related to COVID. So there was not a consensus on the team last week for moving to the five-day. Quite frankly, because there was conflicting information from Desi and then conflicting information from CDC, and it was coming out so quickly during a very hot spike. So we said, we'll meet again this week. We are seeing a lot of different types of things happening with COVID. Some people get it and are okay after five days and some people don't. The nurses are very concerned about spreading the virus and the viral load. So we met yesterday. We had an emergency meeting because, you know, we're faced with a staffing shortage. And if there are people that, you know, can come back, we kind of want to have them come back, but we did not have a consensus on the team. We met again today and we still did not have consensus on the team to make that decision. There's one thing for sure about the COVID leadership team. Since COVID has come into play in this district, we are prioritizing safety and we are not trying to add to the number of cases. I do foresee there being a time when we change that to five days. We have talked about changing it for five days for the staff first because they're adults. And the requirement is that you have to have no symptoms on day six and you have to wear your mask. So an adult would have to go and eat lunch alone. There's no way that we can do that for kids. We cannot isolate individual students so that they can eat lunch alone. And quite frankly, some of our students need constant reminders how to wear their masks correctly. So we've also talked about the different rules for staff versus students. So we're not quite there, but I do think as we see a decline, we will get there. So we meet again every Tuesday. And we have a very solid team and a very good approach to making decisions. Our protocols are very strong. And I will be sure to inform you when it changes.
Thank you for the information regarding your process.
Through the chair, I just wanted to ask an additional question about something that you said. So are other districts around us or even not around us incorporating the five-day rule for students? So I'm wondering how they're managing the students coming back and to your point, right, eating lunch, because they do have to wear their, wear their mask. So I just didn't know if you had any, any ideas around that? If anything has been shared during your superintendent meetings that you have?
It's funny that you ask because we had one today. We did have a superintendent meeting today, which involved some representatives from the Mass Superintendents Association, who meet weekly with the commissioner of education. So every district is really challenged. Everyone is finding the contamination or the spread of this Omnicrom very high. And some people follow Desi blindly. And it's important, and you should know this about me, we don't follow Desi blindly. We make decisions based on the data in our district and what's best at the time. And, you know, there's some districts that don't do as close contact tracing as our nurses do. So I'm sure the principals can attest to this. Every time there's a positive case, the nurse picks up the phone, talks to the teacher and asks for a seating chart. I can only speak about what happens in Webster, but I do know that that level of detail and that level of following through may not exist everywhere. So people have different goals in mind with protocols. So we're not just doing the protocol to get through the day. We're doing the protocol because we really truly have stuck to our goal of trying to mitigate the spread of COVID. So that's been our underlying focus. I think we'll get to the five days. I think it's hard when you start to compare districts to districts. Everybody does what's best for their district and I pride myself on that collaborative teamwork. And our COVID leadership has been meeting weekly since March of 2020. Sometimes more than weekly. And I know that everyone's trying to do the best that they can. And I have to, I have to respect our nurses who are on the front lines with this. And at this point, I'm going to back what their decision is right now. But we'll get there. I have no doubt because we are going to see a decline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, sorry, I think I lost my place. Oh, is the monthly report on fundraising applications. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. You will see in your packet, the Bartlett Student Council has a fundraising application. They sold snowballs to fill snowmen and the proceeds went to the Webster Dudley Food Share. The class of 2023 sold candy canes and the class of 2025, hot chocolate.
Great. Thank you for that update. Next item on the agenda is new business.
Through the chair?
Oh, yes.
Can I ask and bring up an old business I happen to see? If it's, if I recall correctly, Chairman Siddiqui asked us to vote on removing a meeting in February because of winter break. It's still on the website.
Thank you.
Can we update that, please?
Thank you. We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. So under new business, the first item on the agenda is to appoint a school committee member to contract negotiations for the custodians. Dr. Gogan?
We received a letter to enter into negotiations from the custodians and we are requesting a school committee representative to share the joy with Mrs. Perangeli and myself as we negotiate. we negotiate through five contracts between now and the end of the year.
I will entertain a motion to nominate.
Through the chair, I nominate Sheila Blythe to be part of the school custodian contract negotiations.
Second.
Lori, we have a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is to appoint a school committee member to the administrative assistant contract negotiations. Dr. Goggin?
We received a letter from the administrative assistant president, and they would like to enter into negotiations, and we are seeking a school committee representative to join us on that.
I will entertain a nomination for that position?
I would like to nominate Kathy Napparada to be part of this contract negotiations for the administrative assistance.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is to appoint a school committee member to the Unit B contract negotiations. Dr. Goggin?
We received a letter from the Unit B president to enter into negotiations for the Unit B negotiations, and we would ask a school committee representative to join us.
I'll entertain a nomination for that.
I would like to nominate Linda Miller for that role.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the approval of an additional 1.0 special education teacher at Webster Middle School. Dr. Goggin?
Thank you. We have been looking closely at our programming and our students' needs, and we would like to ask permission to add a special education teacher over at the Webster Middle School for a, so that we may split the resource rooms. I believe the justification is in your school committee packet. Mrs. Peterson and Mrs. Barris, if you would like to add anything to that, please do.
So I think this is probably in your packet, but just to reiterate, currently in our seventh and eighth grade resource room, which is a combined class, we have fifteen seventh graders and ten eighth graders, which is a total twenty-five special ed students, which is a lot of students who need individualized attention. What has happened is with our ninety-minute blocks for English and math, so that we can improve our academics around that, is with one teacher teaching four, four of those classes, that's seven and a half hour, that's six hours of teaching time, plus a one-hour prep, plus a thirty-minute lunch, that's seven and a half hours for that one teacher in a six-and-a-half-hour day. So what's happening is our students are not getting the ninety-minute math that all the other students in the building are getting. So that's the justification for that.
Dr. Goggin, I don't see the, is there, was there supposed to be a letter?
There was, there is, and we will get it to you if it's not in there.
I will entertain a motion to approve the additional 1.0 special education teacher at Webster Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is the acceptance of a donation from Knights of Columbus and Christ the King Church of sixteen winter coats. Dr. Goggin?
Thank you. Park Avenue Elementary School received this generous donation, and they have distributed those coats to their students in need. I want to publicly thank the Knights of Columbus and the Christ of King Church for their donation.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from Knights of Columbus and Christ the King Church of sixteen winter coats to Park Ave Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and on behalf of the committee, I would like to publicly recognize the Knights of Columbus and Christ the King Church and thank them for their support and donation. Next item is an acceptance of a donation from Maffrey, and it starts at Home of two-hundred and forty-five backpacks with school supplies, one hundred hygiene bags, fifty lunch boxes, and miscellaneous clothing. Dr. Goggin?
Yes, this was a very big shipment. It was two pallets of a donation that came here, and we sorted out prior to the holidays. Maffrey and the It Starts at Home, Jill St. Seere and Linda Johnson and Samantha Suss from Maffrey worked together to respond to some of our requests of what we needed. Our nurses had put together a list of items that they typically go through, socks, underwear, and hygiene materials. So they worked on that for months, collecting that information, that donation, and we distributed it over the holidays to the schools. It is in the nurses' room, and the nurses are distributing these items to students in need. A very generous donation from them, and I again thank them for their ongoing support, for helping us when we ask for help.
That is great. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from Maffrey, and it starts at Home of the two-hundred and forty-five backpacks with school supplies, one hundred hygiene bags, fifty lunch boxes, and miscellaneous clothing.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and again, on behalf of the committee, I would like to publicly recognize and thank Maffrey, and it starts at Home, for their very generous donation. Next item on the agenda is our favorite topic, FY23 budget first review. Dr. Goggin?
I wish I had popcorn. I'm just going to get up and shut the light. Just one light, I'm just going to shut one light so we can see it. This one or this one? Nope, this one. So Mrs. Perangeli and I are going to go through this together, and our team is here tonight. I do want to just start by saying, we really see the budget process every year as an opportunity to create the change that we need to create, based on the data that we've been talking about. So it is a collaborative process, and we are going to present the first draft to you.
Yep, and whatever we're presenting tonight, you should have a copy of in your budget books. We will be updating these as we move through the budget season. Quickly, the first tab is your budget calendar. The second tab is a copy of the presentation you'll see tonight. And then the third tab is a copy of the budget. It has some narrative from Dr. Goggin. It has the staff justifications, and then a copy of the line-by-line budget.
All right. And we always start by talking a little bit about, you know, our purpose. What are we here for? And I think it's important to constantly go back to that. Our vision and mission is pretty clear. We believe that every student will achieve, and together, we can and we will make a difference with our students and our community. We try to live that every day. We want to provide a quality education and a safe learning environment for our students, and we want to empower them to be successful, responsible, productive citizens in the ever-changing global society that we live in. And I see that here every day. Some of our highlights that we're just going to focus on is, you know, what we've been talking about tonight, the ongoing persistence with trying to establish positive learning environments for all of our students during a global pandemic. Not one teacher, not one administrator, not one parent, not one student signed up for the last almost two years of what we've been doing. We have a priority of establishing safe protocols across the district, and, you know, really, in-person learning continues to be our goal through these challenging times. Our district and school goals are, again, to maintain that safe and engaging environment and to support our teachers with teaching on grade-level standards, using data to inform their instructional practices and decisions. And we are really focused on providing all of our students equitable access to high levels of learning and varied opportunities. And you've seen that. You've seen that with the Bartlett High School renovation project and the educational vision that we've put forward and the steps that we've made with trying to improve some of our programming. We are pretty proud of some of the supports that we've been able to put in place amidst the COVID pandemic. We've had one-on-one devices for all our students. We hired a re-engagement specialist at Bartlett this year to really focus on students that dropped out or at risk of dropping out. We've put additional counselors, noting the mental health issues that have resulted from COVID at Park Avenue and at Webster Middle School. We've hired additional nursing assistants. We're looking for L-teachers. We've put additional academic interventionists at Bartlett. We've put kindergarten parers in all of our classrooms. We've hired additional special education teachers, additional ABA paraprofessionals. We have building-based substitutes at each of our buildings. We just hired an additional BCBA, and we're working with an innovation pathways consultant for the innovation pathways growth at Bartlett High School. And in the parentheses on that slide, it tells you how that's funded. LEA stands for local, the local budget, and SRR, the SRR funds. Mrs. Chapdeline, do you want to just give a quick overview on the curriculum instructional highlights?
Well, it's pretty well articulated here. We're in year five of our pre-K to five wonders. We just upgraded to 2020 wonders. We have our study sync in grades six through twelve. We're in year three, and we are in that most recent version as well, the 2021 copyright. So we're at the leading edge of both of those programs. Ready Math in grades K through eight, we're in year four. CPM Math in grades eight through twelve. And actually, we added grade seven in this year as well, so we're seven through twelve now. We're in year four of that overall. Stem scopes in our science kits in grades three through eight. We also added in K-1 and 2, but not as structured, but there is some work going on with K-1 and 2 as well, so that's kind of cool. Our I-ready diagnostic in grades K through 10. This year, we added 11 and 12, so we're actually testing everyone on the diagnostic and finding that to be valuable. McGraw-Hill Social Studies, grades five through eight. That's the Massachusetts version. We also have I-ready instruction. We're in year four, and I'm pleased to say that we actually have access to I-ready instruction all across the district. It's not, at Bartlett High School, it's actually being offered at no charge for kids that test below the grade level. ST Math, we're in year three, grades K to four. We also added in grades five to six. We're in year two for that at Webster Middle School. And our EL curriculum, that would be Dr. Mackay, but we have Hands-on English, grade one, year one, Carousel of Ideas, grade two through four, year one, and Champion of Ideas, grades five through twelve, year one.
If you recall, we participated in the review last year, and one of our findings was that we did not have a curriculum specific to ELD, to English Language Development. And so we're happy that our teachers are diving right into these three programs across the schools, and we're continuing with ongoing professional development to make sure that by the end of the year, we have a curriculum development plan to submit to DESI in response to our audit.
As we speak about often at our school committee meetings, we are pretty blessed in Webster to have such wonderful community support for what we do here in our schools. And these are just a few of the people that help us out throughout the year, and we want to continue to build off of those community partnerships. Mrs. Perangeli, do you want to detail this one?
So as you know, we typically start our budget around October, November of every year. In a perfect world, we'd be starting in early October. COVID has impacted that over the past couple of years, but we did get our budget going in November. We met with principals and ILT through December. Here we are in January, presenting our first draft budget. We will be back here two more times at our next meeting in February, and then our only meet, I mean, our next meeting in January, and then our only meeting in February. Budget needs to be submitted to the town administrator for February 28th, which we will have prepared and ready to send, and then we'll start discussions with the town, and we'll have a better idea of what our revenue looks like. Typically, the state comes out with a budget. I believe it's the third or fourth Wednesday in January. That hasn't happened in a couple of years, and honestly, I don't really expect it to happen this year. But we will, you know, we're always meeting as business managers, trying to get a feel from DESI as to what the outlook at the state is. I know revenue has been okay. COVID hasn't terribly impacted the revenue stream coming into mass, so we've been managing as a state, which is good news for us. But we look forward to that time. And then we end with our annual town meeting, hopefully in May, to approve our budget.
Our budget goals are to continue to prioritize safety and student learning needs, and to continue to improve our student programming with a focus on developing strong literacy skills in all students, to ensure that all students have the opportunities and equitable access that they need to higher-level classes. We want to continue to provide our staff with ongoing professional development, and we really try to take a system-wide approach with determining needs and setting budget priorities. We work very collaboratively with our town manager and finance committee, and we're looking forward to the budget process. I think we get pretty excited every time it's a budget season, because we really do see this as an opportunity to grow and make those significant changes that we need to make.
Absolutely, and I've already spoken, I was speaking with Chair Becker tonight from the Selectmen and talking about, we have a new town administrator coming on board and what that's going to look like. So, you know, as we move forward, we're hoping once he's on, we'll be meeting with him to really talk about the school district and kind of needs and what, how it impacts us, the budget process, and, you know, what we'll be looking for and how we can work together moving forward. So we're already starting those discussions before we have a new town administrator on This is a historical view of our budget. These are all actuals up until FY22, which is a budgeted amount. So on an average, we've been about four percent. You notice in FY21, we actually ended up decreasing our budget. We returned approximately four to $500,000 to the town of Webster, and we were able to do that by utilizing some grant funding and seeing a lot of savings as COVID was impacting our district. This is actually our FY23 proposed budget. After our first round of meeting with our school leaders, we have a budget that represents a 4.37% increase for a total of $23,462,394.
So part of the proposed new budget, we have listed some proposed new additional staffing, broken up by schools and the district. Park Avenue Elementary is asking for a part-time, year-round administrative assistant. They have a very, very busy office. They would ideally like to get someone who's bilingual to meet the needs of our families. Webster Middle School, the dean that we have, the interim dean position, that's Webster Middle School, the dean that we have, the interim dean position, that's rolled into the budget. That's a needed position over at Webster Middle School. They're proposing a paraprofessional, not to serve as a specialist, but to have a paraprofessional in the library to ensure that the libraries used by the students with more frequency and teachers can come in. The justification for those positions are in your budget book. Bartlett High School is requesting a STEM teacher. That is someone that's going to help with the next phases of the advanced manufacturing classes as our math teachers take on those next courses in the advanced manufacturing program. We're going to need someone who can teach an additional math class and we are also going to need someone who's going to be able to help with the Health and Human Service pathway. And they are requesting an additional special education teacher. Those justifications are in the budget binder in your packet. At the district level, we are looking for an additional occupational therapist and we are looking for a new position, Coordinator of Equity and Compliance. The justification for those are in your position. I can speak a little bit about the need for the Coordinator of Equity and Compliance. One of our goals, one of all schools' goals, is to meet the needs of their students and I think we need some assistance with the, making sure that all of our programs meet the needs of our students and all of our, that we have someone who can help us with the ongoing program review cycle. Mrs. Barris, do you want to jump in on the occupational therapist position and maybe even a little bit more on the coordinator of equity and compliance?
Hi, sure. So with regard to the Coordinator of Equity and Compliance, and this was a discussion we had about all of our student support programs, including ELL, Title I, Special Education. You know, of course, we do ongoing monitoring of compliance as it pertains to how are we upholding the services and needs of our students under the regulations. But taking it a step further, you know, we have, you know, I think increased mandates from DESI as well as, you know, I think the world in and of itself is changing pretty rapidly and bringing to light a lot of issues when it comes down to equity and adherence to making sure that there's, you know, not only a level playing field, but that we're really addressing the needs of our students who are in different subgroups that, you know, have been, you know, historically marginalized. And we really want to be able to stay abreast of it as far as not only the compliance piece, but also making sure that the services and programs and curriculum, all of those things that we are choosing for our students meets, you know, a certain high level of standard with relation to equity. So that's, you know, the discussion that we have had at the table as far as the district leadership team. I don't know if you want to say anything further. Okay. So as far as the occupational therapist position, it's actually, at one point in time, a number of years ago, we did have a occupational therapist on staff. And at that particular point in time, we had a lower number of students who received occupational therapy services. We also had a lower number of evaluations in that discipline. However, it has been an area that we have seen a significant increase in not only the number of evaluations that have been requested, but also in terms of services required of our student population. We currently have two individuals, a, it tallies up to a 1.6 occupational therapy assistants who work in all three buildings and cover all of the service needs of our students, doing the direct services. And we contract currently for an occupational therapist who's a registered therapist who can do supervision, evaluations, and really the oversight of all of those services. We've had to, at times, piecemeal it together, like, you know, with a couple of different people overseeing different buildings and, you know, fulfilling the needs across the district. Right now, we do have someone who's on board with us about three days a week. They're not full workdays, but is overseeing and providing supervision to our CODAs. But because of the number of evaluations, we really have seen the need to increase that. Over the past two years, we have added on, you know, the number of days required for occupational therapy and to cover all of those needs I just mentioned. So what would be being provided at a contracted services will, you know, will end up being kind of shifted and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the actual budget pages.
So in proposing new staff, we've also made some shifts for shifting funding to the local budget from Essar on these particular positions because we need them. And even without Essar, we're going to need them.
Yeah, these were some positions that we had previously, like the nurse assistant was in the LEA, but then when we were working through budget, we were able to shift some of these to assist the town with funding. And so we're looking to put that back into the LEA budget. This is a tricky slide to see. What this slide shows is the new positions and the ones that are highlighted in green are positions that we are shifting from Essar funds into the LEA funds. So it should be a breakdown of the positions that we talked about at Park Ave. You have the half-year administrative assistant and the 1.0 nurse assistant. At middle school, you have the dean of students and the library assistant. At Bartlett, you have a special education, a STEM teacher and an ELL teacher who's already approved in the budget this year. It was after, it was in Essar funds, we're shifting that to the LEA. Special education, we have the Coordinator of Equity and Compliance. And in the district, we have the occupational therapist and the grounds and district technology. Those two positions are shifting to the LEA budget. You can see that the net is $623,315. Then I backed out $100,000 because that's coming out of a grant. It's not coming out of the LEA budget. So there's a net of $523,315 in salary adjustments that will be added to the FY23 budget.
And here is a historical view of our student enrollment. Currently at 1697. There has been a slight decline over the years. This is my favorite slide. This really shows who we serve here in Webster. This breaks up our students by student population. We have a very, an increasingly growing number of students that are L students. We're at 16.2% in comparison to the state at 23%. I'm sorry, for first language, not English. Our ELL students are 10.8% versus the state at 10.5. Our students with disabilities is at 22.8% compared to the state average of 18.7%. Our high-needs students is at 71.4% compared to the state at 51.0%. And our student populations, we have 62.4% of our students qualify as economically disadvantaged compared to the state average of 36.6. I bring this slide up because we need and are obligated to design programming to meet our students' needs and who our students are are diverse and we have different needs than other districts. So it's very hard to compare us to other districts. We have to look at who we serve and what we need to do to serve them. And we've seen changes over the years and as we see the changes, we are obligated to look at our programming and change our programming and prioritize needs. Here's an overview of our current counseling average caseload. They break it up differently in each of the buildings, but we have increased the counseling supports for our students. And as you can see, the American School Counselors Association recommends a school counseling caseload ratio of about 1 to 250 and we don't, we're much lower than that. And here's a breakdown of our special education statistics. Mrs. Barris, do you want to give a brief overview?
Hello again. So I did a little comparison to last year so that you'd have some point of reference, but last year, we had about 445 active students at this time of the year last year. And this year, we currently have 459 active students. Last year, our initial referrals year-to-date totaled only about 51 and a lot of that was in part due to the pandemic. This year, we've rebounded. We're up to about 80 referrals already year-to-date. So I anticipate we may surpass some of our high years, which we've had several of those. So we definitely have been very busy in the referral department. And then just a breakdown of students by disability so you can get a picture of the student population that we're serving. You know, overall, I think we've seen an increase in things like, you know, sensory disabilities and vision and hearing. You know, our communication is always, you know, a very large number as far as students who receive speech and language services and other related communication services. And as you can see, you know, our second highest category for disabilities is in the area of autism spectrum disorders.
And here we have our L statistics. Dr. Mackay?
So we tried to report out the most accurate updated numbers, understanding that these numbers change day to day. Just today, we spoke to two different families with two different students each coming to us, one as newcomers, one family as newcomers and one transferring from a different district to Massachusetts. So that doesn't even reflect what's coming. So we have, at Park Avenue, we have 91 students who are coded as Ls. In addition to 25 students who are opt-out, that means that their families, they are considered Ls, but their families chose not to have ELL services, as well as 15 students who are considered FEL, former EL. And that means that they have achieved a certain score on access test and will be monitored for four years and the opt-outs will also, are also monitored. At Park Ave, there's an asterisk with a total, our total number is 133. However, in kindergarten, students are screened upon entrance. Students are screened in two areas at the start of the year. At the end of the year, the L teachers have to finish the screening with the other two domains. So there are about 15 students that could still qualify in addition to the students that we already have in kindergarten, based on the two domains that are remaining, which are reading and writing at the end of kindergarten. So we have three teachers at Park Ave right now with one vacancy. And at Webster Middle School, we have 45 active students, eight opt-outs, 45 FELs, with a total of 98. We currently have two teachers and that's what we're proposing for next year. And at Bartlett High School, we have 44 active students, three opt-outs, seven FELs, for a total of 54. We have one teacher and we have one vacancy. We really need a second teacher. The vacancies that we had, as Dr. Gogan mentioned before, we've had a really hard time filling and we're hopeful that we can fill them so that we can provide the optimal minutes suggested by DESI in order to achieve language proficiency quicker than where our students have been receiving, have been achieving language proficiency.
So this is an overall breakdown of our budget. Salaries make up about 80% of the overall budget. If you look at out-of-district tuitions, that is 7% of our budget. Maintenance includes 7.8%. That includes salaries. And then you take a look at special education, that makes up 30.76% of our overall budget. This is only in looking at local funds. This doesn't touch any of our grant funding. Here, we have a breakdown of Circuit Breaker. This slide can be a little tricky sometimes to look at. The first column where it says budgeted FY22, when we were working on the school budget last year, that was the budgeted amount. The actual to-date FY22 is what our tuitions are to date. So we take a look at what we have encumbered and our actual expenditures and come up with our budget numbers to date. And then to the right, you have our FY23 budget numbers, our projected numbers. It's kind of funny with this, looking at the actual to-date and where we are going to be next year, they're almost identical numbers. That was just by chance, that had nothing to do with just carrying over in numbers. It's just the way the tuitions worked out. You will see that we have been fortunate in carrying over a year's worth Circuit Breaker. That's a best-case scenario. We like to try and carry over one full year into the next year. You only have one year to spend it. So whatever funds you carry over, you need to spend first in that next fiscal year. Our goal, and it looks like we'll be able to achieve that goal, is to carry over all of our revenue from Circuit Breaker and FY22. You can see I had initially budgeted $641,178. Our actual claim came in at $688,227. So that's the money that I'm going to carry over into FY23 and that money needs to be spent first. I'm estimating a pretty level amount of Circuit Breaker for FY23. So our goal would be to carry over that one year of Circuit Breaker. So what I typically do will take is our budgeted number for tuitions. I'll back out that one year of Circuit Breaker funds and then that's what I'll budget. And then if we find that we're working through the budget and we need to look at funding sources and stuff, we can always go back and adjust that number. But our ultimate goal is to carry over that one year of Circuit Breaker. The next slide takes a look at a school choice historically. We have, we're going to, I'm not going to start at the top and go all the way down. I'll just go to FY21. We had budgeted, I believe, $100,000 to spend in FY21. That year, we had quite a bit of extra money because of COVID and surplus money, so we did not touch the school choice. We were able to fund everything out of our local funds, which was good because it gave us that little cushion to carry over. As you can see, our school choice income has drastically gone down. We are only estimating $62,900. That comes off the cherry sheet. That's where I get those estimates coming in in school choice. So in this year's FY22 budget, we had budgeted $200,000 to spend out of school choice. There was 100 towards technology and 100 that offsets our ABA tutors and special education. We are anticipating doing the same thing with our school choice funds in FY23. And again, this is one area that I see if we have a surplus for some reason at the end of this fiscal year, I'll try not to touch the school choice because that's always an area that we can use to offset pretty easily.
And our focus with the budget is just to keep making ongoing improvements in our learning environments and student programming and staff development. And we feel that the budget draft that we have presented to you tonight is realistic and based on our current needs. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And I just want to point out, Dr. Gogan pointed out to me, in the budget that you received by email in your packets, has the justifications and her narrative, Dr. Gogan's narrative. I didn't copy that and put it in here, but I will for next meeting. I'll print those out and make sure you have paper copies of all those justifications. Sometimes it's easier to read on paper, Dr. Gogan. I didn't say that out loud.
Yes, you did. I heard it.
Thank you for this very thoughtful work on the budget. It looks like we're in really good shape, and the proposals are very meaningful and appropriate, so I thank you for that. I don't have any questions. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have a couple. And one is, according to regulations that I read, the school councils are supposed to have some input into this budget, and I'm questioning that since we had a huge issue when it came to school improvement plans about how those were done through school councils. It's not give this book to the school council and say, this is the budget. They're supposed to have input into that budget, and then you're supposed to have a proper working school council. I don't think we're quite saying that yet, and I think that's an important part of the budget process. I know you get staff input through the ILT team. Absolutely great. But part of that school council is supposed to be not just teachers, but people from the community and parents and even students and their concerns about what they would like to see, and that's part of the budget. And I'm not seeing that.
I can address that, if I may. One thing that we did do this year was to do a parent survey to staff and to families around the use of ESAR funds and setting priorities. So we took that information, shared it with the principals, and they share it with their staff, and they look at it. So I hear what you're saying, Ms. Millet, about the input and the consistency of having school councils meet and do their, do job with the principals and the teams. Point taken. The challenges, I think, that we're facing this year have to do with, at some schools, not being able to have a full team and not having buy-in to have that team. But that input, we try, we are trying to get that in variety of ways. So for example, every time we meet with the LPAC or the Special Education PAC, that, their issues and things that they're talking about get funneled back into the central office meeting, then into the DLT, and then the principals take it back into their schools. So from a systems view, that survey that went out did fall nicely in with the goals that we have presented tonight. Parents are concerned and would like to see more mental health supports. They would like to see more family engagement events, which Ms. Peterson has been doing a great job with once a month at her school. They want to see the staffing to meet the needs of their special education students or L students. That feedback also has tied in with the Student Opportunity Plan that I talked a little bit about at the beginning of the meeting that we put together. Those goals kind of all are hitting those targets, but I will continue to work with the principals with getting their school councils to gather feedback, and the principals are here and may want to add into that.
Through the chair. So I can speak for Webster Middle School, Ms. Millet, that we do have a full working school council with two teacher representatives, two parent representatives, a community representative, and a student representative. And we did discuss prior to the written budget what the needs of the school are. So Webster Middle School is following that protocol and did. Thank you.
Very good. Also, this is a huge point for me. The district website and the school websites need to be updated big time. There's a lot of info. This is number one, where parents get their, and the community get their information, and how we celebrate our students. And I'm not seeing that celebration at all. I remember going to National Honor Society induction. There was nothing on the website about it. And so I hope, because it's part of the regulations, this is supposed to be put on the website. It's supposed to be out there for the public. I hope not just when we vote on it. I hope as we go through the steps.
As we proceed through the budget, I do put it up. I wait till after I present to school committee, because I think school committee should see it first, and then it goes on the budget. So actually tomorrow, it will be on, you'll see if you go back from years, the updates and the information is added.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
But overall, overall, it needs a lot of work because this shows us, and it shows all the good things that are happening here. And I'm just not seeing it. And it's a way, that's the first place I go. And I'm just not, it's, there are things that are old on there that should have been off months ago, months ago, so.
Every school does have a webmaster, and the principals work with the webmaster, and we know that there's been some issues. I appreciate you bringing it up, and we are also addressing those issues with timely information. But I do ask you to keep in mind that it is a crazy time. So certain things have happened where data has not been on. I turned on the website the other day, and there was a complete blank page, and we really didn't know how that happened, so we had to fix that. So communication is key. It is a goal. And I think we have done a really good job in this district focusing on the positives, and that is one tool that we can continue to use. We would, and it's been on our list for about two years, to update the whole website. But given the challenges that we've faced, it's gone to the bottom of the list because we're trying to get through each day.
But it is something we're working on. We are, we are working on that and looking at updating the website. So it's something that we are actively working on behind the scenes. Our hope was to roll it out for next year, something that's a little more updated, because honestly, I don't like our website. It's not very user-friendly, and it's just the way it's formatted. It's, you know, it's a canned, canned website, and the templates are the templates, and you're limited as to what you can do. So we're looking at seeing what's out there and creating something that we have a little more flexibility.
And that's user-friendly.
That's user-friendly to design. That's our goal. And, you know, but it's only as good as we are entering the information also. I mean, I don't care what kind of site, if you're not updating it and you have outdated information, it's going to be old, and it's, you know, you're not helping things. So this has been on our radar. I know that constantly. So it's something we are looking at.
Good. I'm glad. It's just an important piece, and I agree. It should be user-friendly, and it needs to, just like everybody in here has numerous apps on your phone, you know, that you use daily. It has to be that way, where people can go there for the information they need and have it be updated. Because I see on, I've seen parents communicate on Facebook and ask about something that's going on in the school, and one person's saying this thing, another person's answering it another way because they don't have that access to get the correct answer. So I hope we really kind of keep that in mind because it would really solve a lot of issues, plus have major communication, because right now, there's communication problems with what parents are hearing instead of getting direct information.
And the celebrations.
Yes, definitely the celebrations.
So I don't know if this is an appropriate time to mention that behind the scenes, there's a lot more work going into our departments. So I know Michelle Budney's working heavily on curriculum website. We're working on different department websites. We're very excited to see the look of those websites as they continue to evolve, and as soon as they're ready, we'll have them available. But there's a lot of work going behind the scenes that you wouldn't see. We're just trying to get it right. It's not directly related to the website, but I know that Park Avenue and Webster Middle School are heavily also using Class Dojo for communication. And what we really love about Class Dojo is that if you're posting an announcement or a message that the families have access to translate it in the moment, they can, you know, it's easily translatable. And so we 100% need to update and do better with our website, but our families are also getting a lot of information through Dojo at the other two schools, at Park Ave. and Webster Middle School. And I know that the teachers put up a lot of celebratory stuff from their classrooms and their classroom pages and stories, a bunch of announcements. You can actually go in and see, I actually use it as evidence for some of the compliance things, because I can see, I can go into Dojo and see how many parents translated something so that we're, you know, who we're reaching for translation. So it's another, it's another component of communication that is used primarily at elementary and middle.
Right. Because I used Class Dojo. I was one of the people who started it, and, but the community doesn't see that.
You're right.
And we're part of it.
100%.
That's huge for our community, especially our community partners, to see what's happening here. It's absolutely, I loved Class Dojo. It's a wonderful form of communication, but we're also part of a community, and we have to celebrate with the community, too.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, hearing none. I'll move on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
Thank you, team. Have a good night. See you tomorrow.